Increasingly, we're seeing in our world today that young people are taking charge and are moving things forward or taking an increased interest in the community around them. And also, I think it's the way forward. We need, in Gray County, we need to get younger people involved in not just municipal politics and not just in politics, but in community building. Sorry, I drank coffee a little too quick there. And the other thing is also with attracting new immigrants to our, to our community. We've seen an Owen Sound recently with the appointment of Will Leach to the downtown association. You know, it's, it's. I think it's the way forward and while I think that it would be wise to have a committee around it, I think it's also wise to know what staff is already doing right now on that front. We've, we've seen a couple of reports with regards to attracting new immigrants to our area come recently, pre-COVID. And so I think it's important to know what staff are doing currently before we go ahead and ask for a committee on that. So that's what the motion is around and I, I hope I can get support on that.
Well, thank you, Councilor Desai. And I think just as, as a side, you instrumented along with others, Rotorac, a youth part of Rotary. And so I know you've been working with regards to other youth initiatives like that. Okay, Councilor Millen, do you have any to add as a second?
Simply to say that I support the, the resolution wholeheartedly, obviously. I do appreciate the, the Councilor Desai's work on the, on the resolution. And I wouldn't encourage councilors to support this because if nothing else, I think it would be a good reminder of the, of the many and varied work that is going on in the county at this time.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Councilor Millen. Um, okay, so Councilor Kivini, you wish to speak next is what I see on my screen, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And yes, I, I just want to express my complete support for this motion. I think at this point in time, there's a great opportunity for Gray County to reach out and attract immigrants to Gray and young families to Gray. I think that I feel that people are going to be wanting to get out of the city and get up into an environment that they feel is safer for themselves and their families. And I think through the work that county staff are already doing and potentially a committee, that we can be ahead of the pack in, in encouraging those young entrepreneurs to choose Gray. And I also think it won't be too long until we be back into a position of low unemployment. And I think it behooves us to, to get ahead of curve as well and to prepare ourselves with the opportunity here to be ready to attract that workforce and those families to, to Gray County. So, well done, Akash.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilor Kivini. And I think I have Councilor Carlton next. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I too fully support the motion going forward. I just have one comment on it. I note that it seems to strictly reference youth, but we're also talking about immigrants, which are important. So perhaps we need to add that wording to the motion. And I would also comment that Y Employment Services do work with attracting immigrants. And I know this because it's my daughter-in-law that actually runs that program at the Y. So that would be a good one to include in anything we do going forward. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carlton. Anybody else wish to speak? Looking at my screen here.
Can I, can I respond to Councilor Carlton on that?
Go ahead, Councilor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I, I think the, the immigrant population was captured in the word diversity. Having said that, if, if we would like to provide more clarity and explicitly use the word new immigrants, I'm more than happy to, to amend that or a friendly amendment or however that would work.
Okay, Tara?
We can just do that as a friendly amendment and it will be incorporated into the staff report as well.
Okay, Councilor Millen, you're okay with that slate change? Councilor Millen, you're okay with that slate change?
Yeah, I'm good. Yep.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see. Maybe you were giving me a thumbs up there. Okay, um, other, 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 other comments to this notice of motion? I know that with regards to our attainable housing committee that we had set up and wanting to get going, I think personally myself as the Warden, I think there's great opportunity for young people in Gray County and surrounding areas with regards to, we know internet is, is, is much better than it has been. And we know we found that through our COVID-19 experience. Also with regards to cost of housing and also every election, we always hear is how do we keep our young people home? So we've got to create those opportunities. So I think, you know, moving forward, and I've been saying this, that we need to grow Gray County because I think it's a great opportunity for millennials, especially for that cohort to, to be able to, you know, to get a job, live here, raise a family and all that type of thing. So I know part of our job as county councilors, I think, is to create those opportunities and, and move forward on that part. So, very good. So any, for last call, for any last com- comments? All right. So again, that was moved by Councilor Desai and second by Councilor Millen. Is there any, anybody opposed to this notice of motion? All right, seeing none, that is carried. Okay, so we'll look forward to that coming back in a report. So moving forward then, we have a few items here that are in consent agenda. Are there any of those items that wish to be polled for separate discussion?
Mr. Chair, it's Christine Robinson.
Councilor Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, I would like to poll item 5A, please.
Okay, I made note here. That'll be addressed at a later part of the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any of A, B, and C, are there any of those other items which to be polled? Okay, so seeing none. And so I have, I have moved by Councilor Potter and second by Councilor Robinson, yourself, the moving, I guess, items B and C. And any further, just so there's no discussion on that. So anybody opposed to those being supported? Okay, that is carried. All right. So then moving on to items of discussion, this is item 6A. And this is with regards to a report for the growth and it's moved by Councilor Patterson and second by Councilor Potter. And Randy, do you wish to address this?
Yeah, I'll just introduce the, this report and then Scott's going to provide the, the details of the presentation of it. This is with respect to some recent changes to the provincial policy statement that extended the growth horizon. And so we're looking to take advantage of that increased growth horizon from 25 years or from 20 years to 25 years. And, and so this is what this report is, is, is primarily all about. And Scott's going to provide some details with respect to what we're, what we're proposing with respect to that.
Okay, well, thanks, Randy. And Scott, floor is yours.
Great. Thanks, Warden McQueen, and good morning to, to you and members of County Council. Yes, so as Randy mentioned, there was a change made to the provincial policy statement and this was outlined in a report to the committee of the whole on May the 28th. And, and we had flagged to council at that time that there would be a future staff report coming on this matter. One of the key issues here is that now that we're, we're given the ability to plan for, for 25 years, we can look at amending our, our official plans and our growth projections and allocations in that regard. And I know that on the heels of, of the county's new Recolor Gray official plan, there are a number of municipalities that are looking at undertaking five-year reviews of their official plans and some have already started. In this regard, however, we have been notified by the province that municipal official plans still need to conform to the upper-tier official plan. And therefore, because the county's official plan has a time horizon to the year 2038, based on the work that was done in our 2018 growth management strategy, new municipal official plans or updated official plan, municipal official plans would be limited to this 2038 deadline. As such, as Randy noted, staff are recommending that we look at a, a, a small update to our growth management strategy, which would look at both residential unemployment projections as well as the allocations of that growth out to each of our nine member municipalities, such that we can extend that, that time horizon from the 2038 currently in our plan to, well, if it was approved this year, it'd be 2045, of course, to meet that 20, 25-year deadline. There is a requirement in the provincial policies, provincial policy statement, which requires upper tiers to both do these population and employment projections as well as allocate that growth out to our member municipalities. So that's where we're taking our direction from. Staff see this as an update and a great opportunity to check in with each of our nine municipalities to see what's, what's going on in, in their neck of the woods, so to speak, and to capture the most recent growth. And I know we have been seeing growth in, in all our municipalities. So it'd be, it would be a good time to, to update those numbers from, from the work that was done in 2018. And we would certainly look to build off the work that's already, the excellent work that's already being done by municipal staff. And in some cases, municipalities have already hired consultants to look at, at their growth and what that means to each of their own municipalities as well. It should be noted that by, by extending this horizon out to 25 years, it may mean that some of our settlement areas no longer have enough lands designated to meet their, their growth needs for the 25 years. As such, it could trigger municipal comprehensive reviews being done as part of your own municipal official plan update processes. And certainly the county would work with municipal staff to, to supply as much as we could in terms of data for those processes. And then we would look to see further updates to the county official plan at that stage, once those detailed municipal studies had been done. Staff are recommending that we go out to, to market for this update to the growth management strategy. We think $25,000 will be sufficient and these, these monies will come from the, the planning ARC GIS reserve. So, so they won't come from the levy in that regard. We would further note that as, as part of the motion, we are seeking to not only update the growth management strategy, but then come forward with a, a county official plan amendment to implement the findings of that strategy as well as addressing any further housekeeping matters to the county plan. So that's all I have at this stage, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. And I know we just have a new provincial policy that was just brought forth this year. Just a question before I go to others. Do you feel, and I was gonna, I was on the call yesterday with the premier and Minister Clark, but I wasn't as lucky as Mayor Soever to get, get in there. But I, I wanted to ask a question sometime to Minister Clark. With the changes to COVID-19 and with, you know, changes with internet and stuff, are we going to see an uptake in, in growth in Gray County for the simple reason is, is the open space with COVID-19? It's, it's a whole different game player, game changer now with regards to density. I know that the province has very much been supporting density and, and the places to grow and, and, you know, more people and less in small spaces. Do you think that direction is going to maybe change a little bit from a provincial perspective? And it may just happen on its own, just from the sense of migration changes from the general public, population. So I just wondered if you have any comments there?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question and some good thoughts, Warden McQueen. It's certainly something that, that planning staff have been monitoring and it's something that, that if, if this motion is supported, we would look to discuss with, with that future consultant. Anecdotally, and, and from different planners across the province, we're hearing different things. You know, there are some predicting urban flights. But we also had the opportunity to sit in on a recent webinar put on by the Ontario Professional Planners Institute, which prevented research looking at COVID infection rates and, and noting that the infection rates across the province and across large parts of North America, in fact, aren't necessarily directly tied to those areas with highest density. That said, that's, that's, you know, research of a few people of this regard and, and it, at this time, sorry. And, and we'd certainly look to see what further comes out as, as this pandemic goes on and, and comes to an end. And then, like I said, discussing it with the, the future consultant in that regard as well.
Oh yeah, thanks, Scott. And you know, it's funny, I just heard this past week that real estate values in Toronto have gone up even still during this COVID-19. It's still like realistic values are keep driving up. And so that's, that's a bit of a, from affordability side, you know, talking about youth and that type of thing. Well, thank you for that. So I got a couple of people that are wishing to speak and I have Councilor Deputy Mayor Lar and then I have Councilor Robinson. So, go ahead, Councilor Lar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly, you know, I am concerned, you know, that when we do this management study, we, we, we're, we're going into it without actually having seen the so changes in demographics and where people want to live post-COVID. I know that at our emergence, our recovery task force meeting yesterday, one of the real estate and who sits on that said right now he has seven families with kids looking for homes in the town of Blue Mountains that they're going to be relocating from the urban centers up here. And certainly I know that we're going to be particularly impacted. Right now, we already have half of our residences in the town of Blue Mountains are not normally occupied. Based on our water consumption and our waste disposal, the amount of garbage we're picking up. We, we know that there's a lot of people here. I would estimate between 30 and 50% of the homes that aren't normally occupied are now normally occupied, at least for this period. And what I can see is that with companies being far more flexible for allowing people to work from home, that instead of people being in the city for five days and up here for two days in their second home, they'll be here for five days and in the city for two days. And so that has huge implications for our growth management strategy. If people are going to be behaving and living differently, you know, I'm just worried we hurry and go into this based on consultants without actually having an opportunity to observe what, what is actually going to happen. And I think certainly we should get started on this, but we should probably recognize that we don't yet have the data available to know what the impacts of the post-COVID environment are going to be. I know that, you know, even, even working from home is going to mean that a lot of people are going to make this their primary residence and it will have completely different implications for our needs for infrastructure. We were actually able to lower our water and wastewater rates by 5% because we've, we've been collecting too much money. Because our consumption has gone up that much. So be things like this that, that will be going on. And I think we need to really at least recognize this and, and, and take that into account for any long-term growth management strategy.
Well, too much money. We all wish we had too much money.
Well, no, just in water and wastewater, we can't nip into that, though.
No, no, I realize that. I realize that. You, you base it on, on volume and your volume is way up. You have to reset the rates for sure. Thanks, Mayor Soever and Councilor Robinson. I think you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I, I certainly look at this, this report as a well-needed update to, to growth and just emphasizing the fact that Gray County as a whole is, is growing. I certainly would appreciate that county staff, as always, in the, the building department and related departments that are, are looking at this study, connect with the lower tiers. I note in the, the recommendation that, that's taking place. But it's important to look at, at the uniqueness of each of our communities and how that also fits in and represents Gray County as a whole. Certainly, we at West Gray are currently doing an official plan review and, and also looking in parallel with our zoning amendment. So FYI, I know planning staff are aware of that. I like the connection with the upper and lower tier and looking forward to the overall report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Robinson. Are there any other comments from county councilors or staff?
Warden, we have a question from Councilor Body and Councilor Potter.
Okay, Councilor, go ahead, Councilor Body, Mayor Body.
Yeah, thank you, Warden Hicks. I'm, I'm surprised that this is coming so quickly. We just did our official plan not that long ago. Our last growth plan is only two years old. We have planned over two years and, you know, we're going to be redoing the official plan update and probably that we're down to four years when we start that again, which would allow us to extend then. So I'm, I'm surprised this is happening already. I'm surprised that we're talking about changing some of the boundaries on our, on our growth areas. One of the things, you know, a whole bunch of us at lower tiers, not including Owen Sound oddly enough, have declared climate emergencies. And that's going to be huge as we're looking at cars and transportation, small areas of subdivisions where there's no schools, there's no shopping, there's no facilities, more driving versus more intensification. And that's, that's sort of what the larger kind of hit on, but, but it said it differently, but I'm agreement with them. I, I don't know why we're doing this now when we should be, in my mind, should be waiting until we've got a little more planning into, or perhaps a little more knowledge into that climate change aspect. And the fact that it's, you know, we're relying on pre-current numbers being only two years old. As we go into the next official plan round, we'd be extending 25 years in, in any matter. So I'm, I'm just kind of surprised that we'd be spending it now and I'm not sure I can support it, but thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Body and Councilor Potter, you're next.
I actually had the same issue when, when I first looked at this, but I thought so many things are changing and they're changing so fast that I don't think it's a mistake for us to take a look at these issues now. And, you know, growth, as Mayor Soever pointed out, we are aware that we may have a significant round of growth more than we expected. And what we expected was already big enough. That's going to have a lot of implications. And we have a lot of sep- separate settlement areas around our town. And I'm sure some of the other communities in, in Gray do as well. How are we going to service them with infrastructure? What are going to be the implications for things like drainage? What is the COVID, the post-COVID world going to be like? And, and the climate change issue is, is awfully important. And that, for us, that falls into the drainage, one of the big drainage issues that we have to deal with, being at the bottom of the assortment. So I, I don't think it is out of place for us to go ahead and at least start this process. I, I hope it will be a living document that will be reviewed pretty constantly. Because I think to say that we can set the, the rules for the next 25 years now might be a little bit, a little bit too optimistic, but at least we can get, get some, some of the parameters in place and, and start to get some on the, what we might be looking at. But I do agree that we, I don't think we can, we can really figure this out right now. I think it's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you for Council, Council Potter for that. Any other comments, discussion points on this from county councilors? Sorry, Councilor Hicks, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think the province frankly needs to be congratulated for, for listening a bit because they've moved from this 20 to 25-year horizon. Quite frankly, I think we should be looking at 30 to 40 years. But it's good that we're moving from 20 to 25 years. And yes, we do need the upper tier to get its act together so that the lower tiers can conform with the upper tier. So the, the, the update is absolutely necessary. Councilor Soever made a very good point about the COVID environment and knowing that impact. But, you know, these studies are really just a snapshot. It's a, a picture of what we know at the time. And it is indeed a, a living document and, and will, it will be necessary for, for us to constantly be looking at, perhaps doing updates and treating it like that, like a, a living document. I think that the report proposes consultation with the lower-tier municipalities. And I know that various municipalities have been doing various things. So it would be good for the county to benefit from the work that's being done by the lower tiers. So the consultation is a very good recommendation. I would make a point that the report speaks of the fact that we will not be addressing boundary issues as part of this process. But as a result of this process, it may necessitate some, some municipalities having discussions around boundary reviews. In the course of that, the report talks about the need for comprehensive reviews. And I would just make the point that we were very careful during the, the discussions around our official plan to say comprehensive review or an updated comprehensive reviews because some municipalities have had fairly recent comprehensive reviews. One last thing, and I know that I had some conversation with staff this morning about this, is just to mention is my understanding that the consultants will be, will be addressing the issue of allocation. So not just the, the numbers, but some recommendations and input from every lower-tier municipality around allocation as a result of those updated numbers. Those are my comments, Mr. Warden.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Councilor Hicks. A lot of good discussion. Any further discussion points?
Warden, Randy, I believe is going to speak to this. And then Councilor O'Leary has a question as well.
Okay, so go ahead, Randy, and then I'll go to Councilor O'Leary.
Thank you, Warden McQueen. Yeah, just some great, great comments, great discussion with respect to this, this report. In terms of the question with respect to why now, the way we, this way staff perceive this as a, as an interim update, growth study update, and really it's to take advantage of, as Scott mentioned, the, the increase in the growth horizon from the 20 years, 25 years. And part of that is for two factors. One is, as Scott mentioned, there's several municipalities that are currently in the process with municipal official plan reviews. And part of that is right now, based on discussions with the province, as part of those OP reviews, they'd be bound by the current growth horizon that's in our official plan, which only goes to 2038. So by going to 25 years, it would actually increase our growth projections, allocations for an additional seven years. And, and we know that some municipalities, as part of their work, are looking at the potential for, is there a need for additional lands to be added to settlement areas in order to be able to plan appropriately for the growth and, and development? And we're talking our primary settlement areas. We're talking about our fully serviced settlement areas in terms of looking at any potential expansions for those. The second part is in terms of why now, we have a development charge update review that's scheduled for 2021. And so it'll be really critical as part of that to have the most current growth study numbers and growth projections numbers to factor that in as part of the analysis for a development charger view. We know that, you know, 2018 normally would be fine in terms of DC review, but having the most current up-to-date information as part of that DC review will be critical to assess what growth-related projects we need to account for and plan for, not only for the next 25 years, but for infrastructure-related projects even beyond that. So having some, an updated growth projection numbers will be very beneficial for that exercise as well. And, you know, some great points in terms of consultation and the, the point that Councilor Hicks indicated with respect to the importance of allocation and consulting with local municipalities, that's going to be a key, a key critical component of this will be consultation with local municipalities to see what's actually happening on the ground. Just to get some, some input in terms of what Councilor Soever indicated, what do they see happening as a result of a, a post-pandemic period? Some great comments in terms of, you know, we're already seeing a trend for people choosing more to, places to live versus where their actual job is located. And I think even in a post-pandemic world, we're going to see more of that trend just to continue to increase as, as employers allow more flexibility. allow more flexibility to work from home. And, and so that's where stressing the importance of broadband and internet connectivity is going to be critical going forward in order to help support that. Because we think that Gray County is a great place to live, and we think that, you know, as a result of that, people are going to choose to live in places like Gray County in a post-pandemic world. So, so that's something that we definitely want to have discussions with the consultant, definitely have discussions with the local municipalities as a factor in. But as I mentioned, this is an interim growth update. We also are planning for a full growth study update in 2023. And part of that is we'll have the census data from 2021. Give us some further information and, and we'll have a better indication of where we're going in a post-pandemic world as from a growth and development perspective. So that'll be planned in 2023 is, is what our current capital plan proposes. So this is an interim update. Again, for two factors, one to support some municipal OP reviews that are currently underway or currently planned in the next year or two. And then the next one is a development charge background study update, which we're planning in 2021.
Okay, thanks, Randy. And I think Counselor Leary, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Randy, I'm just thinking about money here, like $25,000. Are you going to be asking, with things changing as fast as they are, are you going to be asking for another $25,000 in two or three years' time? And, and rather than give reasons as to why now, give me the reason coming the other way. What is the downside of waiting for four years?
Okay, that's a question to you, Randy. Go ahead.
Great question. And I think the downside again is with several municipalities planning to do official plan reviews and updates, again, they would be hampered by our current growth projections, which are only to 2038. So to, again, to be able to take advantage of the additional seven years that we'd be adding from our growth projections and allocations, it just allows for us to overall throughout Gray County, both from a county level and a local municipal level, to be able to account and plan for our communities in terms of how we need to grow and thrive over the next 25 years versus 18 years, which is what they would be hampered by. And I know it's, it sounds not great, but it actually, we think it'll actually make a big difference in terms of, you know, overall growth projections and, and allocations throughout the county. And like I said, it's, it's important to have those numbers for a development charge review. That's a key one for us. We really want to have a better sense of, of, of what's going to happen over the next 25 years and 25 plus years to be able to plan for what growth-related infrastructure projects that we need to account for in our, in our DC background study.
Okay. Thank you for that, Randy.
I can add, Mr. Warden.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm CEO.
The other piece of, you know, aligned with the development charges discussion is the community benefits charge discussion, which is a, a brand new tool. And I think the more information that we can get and bring to this table for you to consider and for, for us as staff to be able to model means that we'll be able to make, you know, the absolute best use of, of these tools that, that we've been provided and ensuring that either we're not leaving things on the table that we shouldn't and shortchanging our residents, or conversely, you know, taking, taking more than, than we should or that we actually need to have right now. So we're just really trying to get this right and collect all the information that we can. And you'll notice that the resources to do this work are coming from a reserve, and it is a reserve that we've had for a little while. And so rather than look for new resources, we thought it was most prudent to repurpose a reserve that, that we have had and, and don't see as critical and need for at this time.
Okay, thank you, CEO. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Who, who we got? I'm looking at my screen, I got a voice here. Sorry, who?
Counselor Robinson.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Robinson, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you. I, I just want to make it clear that I can support this resolution because it's looking at growth management data and strategy that can assist our lower tiers. So within our lower tiers, as certainly, that's been discussed, that some of the lower tiers are doing official plan reviews, and also they're accompanying zoning amendment bylaws. But keep in mind that each of our lower tiers have a uniqueness. So if this strategy can support our lower tiers specifically in terms on how they are trying to enhance their specific municipality, I can support it. If it's going beyond that scope in terms of looking at boundary issues, that is something that I am not looking at in the discussion for this strategy. So I just want to make it clear that I can support it in terms of the, the necessity for gathering the data for DCs and also supporting and being complementary to official plan reviews that are being done at the local level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Robson. I don't know if Scott or Randy have any comments there at all, or? Or, okay.
Yeah, just to, yeah, so as Scott indicated, it's, it's just looking at the projections and allocations. If there, if it points to a need for any additional settlement area lands to be added, that will be done through a separate exercise as part of a conference review or updated conference review, as, as Counselor Hicks indicated, through either an OP review, which would trigger a separate official plan amendments and other, other things of that nature. So at this stage, we're just looking at the projections and allocation numbers.
Okay, thanks for that clarity.
Having, having the consultant, because there are municipalities that are, are unique. So making sure that that is, is factored in as part of the overall review from a, by the consultant will be important for sure.
Thanks for the clarity, and I just need to make sure that, that message is clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further comments or questions from county councilors? Just a comment for myself to Randy and Scott. I know a few years back, we were going through the Markdale Beavercrest School, and it seemed to be at that time, the school board didn't have the updated numbers with regards to growth projections and stuff, so. By going through this exercise and updating, is that, is that circulated or shared with the school board system? Because that's all hand in hand, as Mayor Lars said, that they've got six or seven families that are looking with kids coming into this area. Because it seemed to be they were, they were missing that mark of, of that, of their growth compared to what was happening. And so I don't know if you have any comment there.
Yeah, I think, I think they'll be a key partner to engage as part of this process. We flagged that as part of our, our strategic plan work in terms of trying to engage a wide variety of partners and stakeholders when we're looking at subjects like this. Because having the school boards with different growth projection numbers versus what we're projecting or allocating just doesn't work. So if we're, we have the ability to share, and we've had those discussions with school boards in the past, and they're definitely willing to, to work together and look at that when we're doing these reviews. So I think there'll be a key, key stakeholder for sure with respect to this, this review.
And certainly demographics and, and age cohorts, and as we have the aging baby boomers moving forward, or forward in the next 20 years, that has maybe a factor as well, right? And where people are, are coming. So, okay, we'll move on here. So again, that was moved by Counselor Patterson, second by Counselor Potter.
If I might, Mr., my, my, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I'm sitting here listening to the discussion and it strikes me that I wonder what would it look like if we went back, I don't know how long we've been doing these growth management studies, but it'd be interesting to look back even 10 years and see how, how, how well are we hitting the targets here? Or are we just, or would get better value to just throw in a dart at the wall and say, yeah, there's our growth management, you know? Randy's laughing because, you know, sometimes we get not too bad, but other times we're wildly wrong in our projections. So, you know, we, we get all tied up in knots trying to figure out what's going to happen in the next, well, whenever 2038 is, or 45 or whatever, when really, we're just guessing.
Don't worry.
There's all kinds of variables that go into this.
Don't worry, Brian, you and I'll still be farming. And, and the other, the other side is, is a perfect example of Southgate. Look at the growth that you have had that wasn't protected. And, you know, good on you guys, you know, there it is. And I think that was one example that I remember with the school board is they didn't see that coming. And another sector is the midnight population. There's a whole different sector with different kind of growth number. You know, and, you know, that would not.
To be honest, we saw the growth coming, but nobody believed us.
I'll give you that. I will give you that. Okay, I don't know, Randy, do you have any comments to throwing the dart versus a nice team, Mayor Lars?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think as, I think Counselor Hicks indicated, it is, it is a point in time, obviously in terms of, you know, using the best data and best information that we have at that time. And things change, and that's why we need to regularly monitor this. You know, I think it's important to work, continue to work with local municipalities, monitoring building permit activity, what's happening on the ground from a development application perspective. So even if we get these snapshots in time, which we're required to do based on provincial policy and include in our official plan and, and use those numbers as part of our overall planning for growth, we can't lose sight of the fact that things change. And, and we need to continually monitor and update these, these growth numbers and, and projections and allocations we go. Because, you know, things like what we've seen in Dundalk and other factors, or when we went through a recession period, we were, our growth projection numbers were way high at that time. So things change in, in post-pandemic worlds. Yeah, that's going to change as well, but utilizing, I guess, the best data and information that we have available during this period and getting that information from local municipalities and others of what's happening on the ground and what they anticipate happening on the ground will be a key factor in this, this, this review, as well as future reviews as well.
Okay, thanks, Randy. Mayor, Mayor Swever?
Yes, Counselor Millen brings up a very good point. And I think this time it's even going to be more challenging, particularly at this point in time when, you know, the pandemic has yet to run its course, particularly south of the border, and, and that will have a huge impact on the economy. So, you know, I'm kind of leery of starting this, rushing to start this right now because I don't think this is an optimal time to gather data. And, you know, I think, as Randy pointed out, we've had challenges before, and we don't really know what the next year is going to bring. And I think there's more very, there's potentially a bigger range of outcomes than normal. Like recessions come pretty regularly. We know that we'll have one every 10 years kind of thing, but in this case, depending on what happens with COVID and, and how respond to that, where they choose to live, how they choose to live. These are huge unknowns at this point in time. So we may be just, you know, spending a lot of money here to come up with information which we find, you know, we, we don't really know how growth is going to happen and where it's going to happen. And you know, the future right now is very uncertain. So trying to predict a future is difficult even when we're in normal times. But when we, we're in these times, it's, it's pretty much impossible, I think. And you know, I think, you know, I always, I'm a data guy and I love data, but as you guys know, but it's, you know, at this point, I'm not sure that we can collect anything of value at this point in time.
Okay, well, I guess I go to you, Randy. Is it a consideration that county council defer this for six months just to see where we shake this out and still bring it back? In the sense of, I'm, I'm getting, as you're hearing, some conflicting whether we should move forward because of what's happening, should we wait? Your thoughts?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, looking at what we have now to, to factor into things like official plan reviews to factor in for the development charge background study, it's probably less of an update of where we think we're likely going to be going. And that's based on the 2018 growth managed study numbers, which, you know, wouldn't have even factored anything with respect to pandemic related matters or, or what's been happening on the ground or what we think could be happening on the ground. And I, I so, I think there's value in still moving forward with this, this interim update. I think it'll, it'll give us some further information that we will need to factor in for our DC background study. And like I said, we need to regularly monitor this as, as we go along. This is, it'll be a, a point in time, but an important point in time that we need at this stage for those official plan reviews that are currently underway or planned as well as our DC background studies. So I think it's, as staff, we're, we're, we're still wanting to support, I guess, have council support in terms of moving forward with this interim update. But I totally understand, you know, some of the comments that councils are coming from. And, and hopefully as, as, you know, once we engage the consultant, we're probably looking at a period of a few months anyways to complete this. We'll maybe have some data and information to, to see what is happening on the ground from a development perspective. We're still receiving new applications. So we're not seeing a slowdown whatsoever. And, and it'll be great to, and from what I'm hearing from other local municipalities, it's similar. But we'll see how we go over the next two, three, three months while we engage this consultant, if council supports this, to see if that has changed at all. So we'll, we'll make sure that, you know, we're trying to factor in again the best data and information that we have to give us the best snapshot in time. And then, like I said, the importance of regular monitoring this going forward will be key. And at that time, if we see that there's a need to, to look at that, we'll, we'll, we'll take, we'll take another look at it. We have some other data analysis supports in house, and we can continue to monitor that with, with those supports with our playing data analysis coordinator as well. So, so I guess those are, those are staff comments, I guess, at that, this time.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Christine Robinson, thank you. At the appropriate time, I would be pleased to put a, a motion forward to defer for consideration of this item for one year, bringing it back. We're in a pandemic. I, I've been listening to my colleagues in terms of justification for moving ahead and also deferring this type of consideration. So at the appropriate time, I would move a deferral and I'd be looking for a second here, please.
Okay, so just before I entertain, I know deferrals take precedence over motions that are on the floor. Is there any new business that hasn't been discussed from county councils that was to be raised at this time with regards to the motion that's on the floor? Any new business? Okay, procedurally then, through Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, a, a motion is being indicated to defer. Do we have a seconder for that deferral?
I'll second it, Mr. Warden.
Let's, Counselor Swever. There is a debate on deferral, I understand, procedurally. So, so it's taken precedence now. We have a motion on the floor for a deferral discussion.
Let's see, Counselor Potter.
Counselor Potter.
Or Desai as well.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I'm okay with deferring this because, because I do think that there are things to look at. I wonder if we could use that time though, to look as Chris, Counselor Robinson mentioned earlier about the scope of what we'd be doing with this. And, and could we use some of that time to what the scope should be? Because we all are aware that, that sometimes these studies come back to us, and if we look at them 10 years down the line, they're wildly inaccurate and, and they're probably looked at things that they shouldn't have. And that's where they, they go astray. So I'm wondering if, if we could use the year to review what the scope should be, what we should be looking at. There are things we, we really need to know. Rural broadband is, is certainly one of them, but drainage, infrastructure of all kinds. So I wonder if we could do that and that would give us some time to make it maybe a more sensible or more useful in the long term.
So procedurally, I think if it's, if the deferral is carried, the, it would come back as, as indicated in the motion. But Randy, do you have any comments, sir?
Uh, no, no, nothing further to add at the, at this time. I don't.
I would, I would add, Mr. Warden, if I may though, that, again, I will make the point that the growth management study underpins the development charges background study. And there are aspects of a growth study that need to be looked.
aspects of a growth study that need to be looked at and, and assessed in order to be able to be useful in supporting the, the background study. So I think when you looked, if you look across, um, the province, you would find that the structure of a growth management study, um, has, you know, between one jurisdiction and the next, has a lot of, um, consistency and a lot of similarities. I don't, I don't want to discount Counselor Potter's points. I think that we can always ensure that these things are structured in a way that have, um, captured the unique circumstances that we find ourselves in. But for the most part, a growth management study is a, is a, is a structured document. Um, and, and so we don't have complete carte branche to, uh, be able to, you know, make it however we want it to be.
Okay, thank you, Madam C O. I, I, there's nothing stopping if, if there was a particular area that we wanted information, a report to come forward that we need information around a certain area as well.
We can, we can always do that.
Yeah.
At any time, yes.
Okay, follow up on that, Counselor Potter, or anything? No? Okay. Um, any other discussion on the deferral?
There was Counselor Desai and Counselor.
Sorry, Counselor Decide, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, it's increasingly looking like, uh, Counselor earlier is not going to make the noon hour tea time. Um, but to, to bring it to, to the point of debate, I think, I think a one-year deferral, I think any deferral right now is, is long. Uh, as, as the Director of, uh, Planning has already pointed out, that there is a process that happens, uh, going forward if, if we, even if we approve the, uh, the, the motion as it is today. Uh, there is a process on, uh, finding, uh, someone to do the study and, and, and so on, which, which could take about six months. So if we defer debate on this today to a year from now, then the, the study isn't starting for at least 18 months from now. So we're already behind the eight ball. Uh, just because we're in the middle of a panda, and I, I would argue we're not even in the middle of a pandemic. We're, we're on, on the, towards the end of it from all, from, from how things are starting to open up. We're closer to, we're, we're past the middle. Uh, we can't, we can't bring everything grinding down to a hole. Like, it's been, uh, what, three, four months now? Um, the world moves on despite the pandemic. Real estate transactions are still happening. They were, uh, classified as, uh, as essential at the beginning of the pandemic. People are still moving around. There, I mean, uh, in Gray County itself, um, I believe it was the last month, uh, uh, the, 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 um, uh, price of real estate went up 4%. Uh, compare that to Toronto where the price of real estate went down. So people are moving up, and I think we need to do, we need to move on this sooner rather than later. So I, I struggle to agree or to even really see the rationale of deferring the study at all, because we know that if, even if we approve the study today, it's going to be about six months before the study gets underway. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Desai, and, uh, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, who was the next person?
Counselor Burley.
Counselor Burley, go ahead, Counselor Burley.
Thank you. Great discussion on, uh, motion, but I'm going to ask for a recorded vote on the revised motion.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a recorded vote on the, on the deferral?
Yes.
Okay. Before we go there, is there any other comments before we go to record vote? Uh, Sullivan Hicks, uh, Counselor Hicks, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would, um, echo the comments of Counselor Desai. Um, the fact that there is an updated provincial policy statement alone is justification for the upper tier to get its act together so that the lower tiers can do, uh, this work. So the growth management, uh, study is pivotal to that. Um, and it underpins many other things that need to happen, so we need to get on with this. There's no absolute perfect, uh, time. I, I, I align this to making a decision about upgrading your phone. You know, when is the right time to upgrade your phone? Because, you know, I'm constantly thinking, geez, I'd love to have that new phone, but the minute I get that, they're going to come out with the, with the 11 or the 12, and it's going to have these features and, you know, maybe I hold off just a little bit. At some point, you have to get on with it. And I, I think that, you know, many very good points have, have been made about, um, uh, uh, about issues that, that could be at play or still developing, is still ongoing, and we can respond to that. But again, it's a snapshot, uh, in time. It's a living document, and we will be constantly looking at it in, in light of, uh, developments that, that come forward. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting the motion to defer.
Okay. All right. Any further comments before we go to a recorded vote?
Mr. Warden. Robinson.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, um, Mr. Warden, through you as the, um, the mover of the deferral. I really see the snapshot in time being more relevant within, um, in the year's time. Uh, certainly, uh, there is a process in place, and when it, should this deferral go through, and I look to my county colleagues, uh, for support of that, that, uh, should it go through, that process can, and it is approved for the study in one year's time, that process will then kick in in terms of, of, uh, the R F P for consultants and the data collection. And I'm suggesting that, uh, that the, um, the data may be more relevant within that year's time. Um, I, I think it, it's, uh, most valid that, uh, that we wait. Thank you.
Mr. Warden. Sure, go ahead.
Uh, just to, one thing to, just to remind council to be mindful of is, um, the, the term of this council, and, um, as those timelines march on, we have, um, two, two years left and essentially a little better than 18 months of, of this council before there's the potential of being in a lame duck position. So, um, that's just one other fact to, to consider. Um, if this council wishes to consider work, um, we need to make sure that that work will be completed in, in a timeframe that will allow for that.
Oh, Madam C O, I thought in that, uh, motion, or that, uh, uh, information that came out of the province that they're going to cancel the 2022 municipal election. Just kidding, just kidding. So, thank you very much for that. I, I, that's, that is, that is valuable information in the sense of the working time of, of county counselors. And, and I guess that's why I only raised the part of if, if the one-year deferral versus a six-month deferral, is that something that maybe is, is an option as well? So, but the, the motion that's on the floor is for one year. So, uh, Randy, you wish, uh, make a comment?
Yeah, just, just further to, I think, uh, Kim's comments with respect to previously the, regarding the, the um, importance of the, having the growth data for the development charges background study update. Um, normally, we try to start that process, um, fairly early in the process, and, and the bylaws set to expire um, in, uh, January of, first of 2022. Um, so we, we try to at least get it, uh, that process started in the spring of, of the, the year prior, which would be 2021. So, so my only concern with respect to a year deferral is that we wouldn't have that, that growth, uh, projection information updated when we start that process. And that's, like I said, a key piece of, uh, why we're requesting this and, and a key piece of that, that process, uh, to have the most up-to-date, uh, data with respect to the development charge background study. So I just, I just wanted to provide that information to council as part of their, their, their deliberations and discussions with respect to this, uh, piece.
Thanks, Randy. Thanks, Randy. Uh, any further new information before we go to? Okay, Counselor Decide.
And Counselor Soever as well, please.
Okay, Science War.
Thank you. Um, so from what, from what Randy has just said, if we want to have, if we want to start the process on the development charges by spring of 2021, we want to have the updated growth projections before that. And so really, even a six-month deferral wouldn't, wouldn't be ideal. Um, so I, I, I would, I, I cannot support a deferral, uh, at all on this. Really, it's, it's like, uh, Counselor Hicks said, uh, it's like the phone. When do you upgrade? At, at some point, you've got to make, make the decision. And I think we need to make a decision now. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Soever.
Yes, and, um, no, I can, I can understand all the arguments and, you know, the, the, the desire to meet the process is great. But, um, you know, the thing is, are we going to be able to get good data, which, you know? So we're going to use this data for our development charges. So if bad data now, we'll, we'll get those wrong too. So, you know, this cascades all the way down. It's kind of like you're planting in addition to your house, and you, you're not sure whether you're going to have, uh, one child or triplets. And, uh, so let's go ahead and, and build the whole house and then figure out, uh, you know, how many rooms we need. Um, you know, it's, um, you know, I think that perhaps, um, and I, I don't know how the mover will feel, but I, I'm happy to have staff bring a report in six months and make an argument for why they can get good data at that point. Because I think right now, I think the odds of getting good data that's going to be reliable is, uh, is non-existent at this point. So, uh, you know, we could go ahead and do all this, and we can finish all the paperwork, but will the data be good? And will it be useful? And then if we build our development charges on that, will that be valid and will be, will be have enough money in the future? So, um, you know, I, I'm willing to, um, you know, move friendly amendment that, um, you know, staff come back in six months with an update report explaining why they feel they can now get good data.
Okay, so I'm going to go back. Thank you for that, Mr. Soever. So I'm going to go back to the mover. Um, uh, Counselor Robinson, any thoughts on the comment, the comments that have been made to your motion?
Sure, certainly, and, um, I, I can certainly support that. It's friendly and, uh, but I would absolutely like, uh, the vote to be taken on it. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, so from the seconder, are you supportive of that as well? Of a six-month friendly amendment?
I'm the second, you're still.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're, you're okay with that, so, okay. Just hang on, I go to, before I go to Counselor, uh, Desai, Madam Clerk, um, what do you need processed here if, if, if the mover and seconder supports the six months?
So I just like to confirm that this is a deferral for six months, and that staff will bring the report back at that time.
Or bring back, bring back our report, I think is referred.
Is it? The defer, if it's a deferral for six months, the, this specific report will come back. If you'd like a different reports, um, probably the best thing to do is to bring forward a, a motion to request that, a separate motion.
For it to read, to bring back an updated report at that time? I don't know. It's the mover and seconders motion, so I'm not, I'm not going to say.
No, I, Mr. Warden, I'm just treating it as a friendly amendment, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm also seeing that we haven't made the decision on transit yet. We're waiting with regard to, uh, COVID. So I'm seeing this as a, a parallel item. Uh, I would very much like, uh, as soon as the, um, the seconder confirms that, could, could you possibly call the vote on this, please?
Okay, so, so Madam Clerk, uh, the mover and seconder are okay with a six-month change here? Okay, so is there, I've been requested to call the vote. Is there anything that's burning here that needs to be discussed? Counselor Decide, make it quick.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, for staff, do we think we can get good data? Um, I would imagine that if staff felt that we couldn't get good data, that we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't be seeing this report right now, or we would be seeing this report with a caveat in it saying, we don't think we can get good data, but there is a process that needs to happen, and here's why this report is coming forward. Um, two, I, I, I'd like to know, um, well, I guess the second one has, has been answered through the debate. So, yeah, my question is to staff, do we think we can get good data?
Randy, good data, good data. Or current data.
Based on my previous comments, uh, you know, the data that we'd be using for official plan review updates and the D C background study would be based on the data that we currently have now, which is to 2038. And so that doesn't, I mentioned, factor in anything with respect to what's happened last two, two years and a bit, uh, as well as doesn't factor into anything that we think could happen with respect to the pandemic, a- as well as any information that we've, we could gather, uh, as part of, uh, the analysis of what we're seeing happening on the ground with consultation with local municipalities. So, so I guess, um, from a staff perspective, I guess, we'd be better to have 2045 growth projection information with some of those information and pieces factored in versus using 2038 data that doesn't factor in any of those, uh, those factors.
Okay, so I'm going to, then, now, Madam Clerk, uh, to proceed with the recorder vote, please.
So this is a recorded vote on the six-month deferral. Counselor Mackey, sorry?
So just for clarity, a yes means you support the deferral?
Right. Counselor Mackey?
No.
Sorry, need to adjust my tray here. Counselor Gamble?
No.
Counselor Burley?
Against.
Counselor Carlton?
No.
Warden McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Decide?
No.
Counselor Patterson?
No.
Counselor Hicks?
Nay.
Counselor Columbus?
No.
Counselor Kivney?
No.
Counselor Body?
No.
Counselor O'Leary?
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury?
No.
Counselor Mill?
No.
Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Counselor Potter?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Motion is lost, 6223.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk. And so the original motion is now, as Counselor Patterson and Counselor Potter, any further discussions on that motion? Any opposed to that motion? That is carried. Okay, thank you for that. There was a request I had for a 10-minute break. Is that right, Counselor Desai?
Yes, please, uh, Mr. Warden.
All right, well, we, we, we gotta hurry up because Counselor O'Leary wants to get to that goal court. So it's 11:26. Do you want to come back at, uh, with, uh, 11:30, 11:40, 11:35?
11:35, I'm good.
Okay, 11:35. Okay, there you are. Thanks, Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk.
Before us is a proposed plan of subdivision and.
Just, just hang on, just hang on. I don't know if, I see, I, I see most people coming back. I see the Deputy, uh, Warden is still not back. Uh, I think everybody else is, so in, in, in the sense of time, and, and Counselor O'Leary wants to get out to that, uh, sunshine court, I think we'll, we'll move ahead and, uh, Scott, you have the next report. And so on that report, we have, uh, P D R C W 2920, and it's moved by Counselor Kivney and Counselor Woodbury. And Scott, you're going to take this one on, and this is with regards to Peaks Metal final report. Scott?
Great, thanks, Warden McQueen. I am just going to try to share my screen here just to get everybody, uh, a picture of, of the subject lands here. Can everybody see the map that's up on the screen now?
It's on my screen, uh, Scott, so I presume it is.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So what we have before us is, is a proposal for a plan of subdivision in the Camperdown areas, and you'll, it, Camperdown area, and you'll see on the screen the subject lands are highlighted in yellow. Uh, they're looking at proposing approximately 16 new lots here. This was, uh, upped from the original proposal of 12 lots, but after discussions with town and county staff and the proponent, uh, this number was increased to 16 to better align with both county and, and town official plan policies. Uh, the subject lands are, are 2.3 hectares in size. The 16 new lots would, uh, would gain access off of the existing Dorothy Drive. And this is part of a, a original plan of subdivision that was approved in, in the year 2006 by the Ontario Municipal Board.
And this is part of a, a original plan of subdivision that was approved in, in the year 2006 by the Ontario Municipal Board. And at that time, this block of land was contemplated for, for sixty-five residential units. Uh, in discussions that have happened since then, it's, it's been determined that sixty-five was, was probably a little high on this one. Uh, and as such, we have the proposal for us today at, at sixteen units. The lands are designated for growth in, in both the county and town plans. And a zoning bylaw amendment that was associated with this plan of subdivision application has just recently been passed by Town of Blue Mountains Council. Uh, as you can see on, on the attached photo, uh, the lands, uh, to the north and, and west are already, uh, in the process of being developed with, with subdivisions. Further west, there is of course the golf course. Uh, and, and the lands, uh, to the south and east of, of the proposed development block here are the escarpment slope and, and those lands have been dedicated to the Town of Blue Mountains. So we won't see any further development, uh, south or east of this development in that regard. We did go through the regular public process on this development. The agency comments received were generally supportive, subject to the draft plan conditions attached to the report. Uh, there were some public comments with respect to, uh, impact on the environment and impact on the escarpment. There are also some other public comments to suggest that, uh, this was, was, uh, an improved proposal, uh, from the, the sixty plans and made further inquiries about when these units would be for sale. With respect to the, the comments regarding the impact on both the escarpment and the natural environment, there was an environmental impact study done in support of this development. Uh, that study was reviewed by staff from the Niagara Escarpment Commission, the Gray-Salvo Conservation Authority, town staff and county staff. As part of one of the draft plan conditions, uh, there will be a requirement for a tree preservation and, uh, and, uh, and retention plan and, and staff feel, um, between the comments from the agencies and our own opinions that, uh, that these sixteen houses won't have an undue impact on either the local environment or the escarpment in that regard. And as I noted, the escarpment slope, uh, is protected based on being owned by the town. Uh, as such, staff are recommending draft approval on this one, subject to the conditions as, as we believe the development has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. It is consistent with the provincial policy statement 2020. Uh, it's not in conflict with the Niagara, Niagara escarpment plan and it conforms to both the town and county official plans. Uh, that's all I have at this stage, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, uh, thanks, Scott. And, uh, you still have the screen up there, so I'm going to have to go by your voice or, or over there. Any, any comments or questions with regards to the Peaks Metals final report? All right, so I hear none. Any opposed to this motion? Hearing none, that is carried. Thanks, Scott. And moving on then to our next report, C D R C W oh seven twenty, ten-year housing and homeless plan and year in review. And that's moved by, uh, Counselor Robinson and Counselor Carlton has seconded that motion. And I think Emery, you're going to, uh, speak to this, uh, report.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, this is the annual report that we provide for our Housing and Homelessness Plan. Uh, this report includes, um, the timeline from, uh, April of 2019 to March 2020. Um, it looks at, um, the progress that we've made so far in our Housing and Homelessness Plan and, um, to do with the funding that we received from our Investment and Affordable Housing Program and our, uh, to be program, our Community Homelessness Program. So when we look at, um, highlights, uh, the creating more affordable housing, we had fifteen, uh, units of mixed affordable and market rent apartment that was completed in Durham. Um, we've set the groundwork for fifty-nine new rentals to be constructed in Phase Three of Ottawa Heights, which will be starting shortly. Um, we have, uh, approved some rent subsidies for the Canadian Mental Health Association to provide, um, options for some of their clients. Um, and we were able to provide ten households down payments for our Ontario, or sorry, for our homeownership program. In preserving our existing stock, um, we did provide $212,000 through our Ontario Renovates Program to residents for, um, minor repairs to their house. Um, we, of course, are also looking at preserving our own housing with our ten-year capital, uh, plan and commitment to sustain and improve, um, our own community housing, focusing on energy efficiency, safety and renewal. Um, as part of the chronic homelessness, um, we have increased, um, our, um, emergency line to twenty-four hours a day working with a new partner of two-on-one. Uh, we continue to work with Y Housing, um, for support and outreach for people that are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Um, and we supported, uh, the Kiwi Project through the Mooka Dog Native Culture Center. Um, and this project aimed to increase awareness in the community, um, with regards to service delivery agencies. Uh, and we've also, um, provided some supportive housing. Um, we've partnered with Canadian Mental Health Association to provide some outreach services to our own tenants. So we have our own worker now for our own housing. Um, we've supported Safe and Sound with some funding towards their transitional housing. And of course, we provided funds, uh, through our, um, uh, Community Enhancement Fund, which provides community, it's small grants to, um, community programs to provide, uh, our local partners that are in our, um, in, uh, our, um, community that are providing services for those that are experiencing homelessness. And we continue to support seventy residents on a monthly basis with transitional housing throughout Gray County, um, through our five, um, housing with support, related support program. We have five providers. Um, next steps, we are looking at and working with Canadian Mental Health Association, um, to focus on, uh, bringing in a by-name list. So it's not actually a list, it's called a list, but what it is, is it is a, um, opening for anyone. So if someone is at the hospital and they're experiencing homelessness, um, if they're at, um, the Y, another community partner, then they are filtered to this one person who then will provide an assessment, uh, figure out their needs and then reach out to, to the community supports that are available for them. So this is, um, another step as to what we've been, uh, working towards with Canadian Mental Health Association. And we're hoping to have someone hired for that, um, by September. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Emery. Uh, questions from county councillors? Speak up, if you have any.
I have one, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, Counselor Millen.
Thank you. More, uh, good afternoon, Emery. In regards to the, um, community, uh, support programs, there is a Community Enhancement Fund. Is there, is there a requirement to have the money spent by a certain period of time? And if there is, is there any indication, because a lot of these programs have been, you know, stopped for the pandemic, uh, is there a provision to extend the timeline so that, you know, the community groups can have the full benefit of the, uh, of the funds that are, are provided?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, we do have a timeline of a year. We ask for reporting, but if the money is not completely spent, then we just ask for a plan on how it would be spent i- in the future. So that's there, so there are provisions for that. So then we would never be calling back the funds, not when they're needed.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I, I just wish you were working for the bank that I use. I could use the same kind of provisions, but thank you.
Keep at, keep at it, Counselor Millen. Keep at it. Any other questions to Emery?
Counselor Mackey had a question.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden McQueen. Thanks, Emery, for the update. Can you just, uh, as far as the emergency twenty-four-hour, uh, shelter that's in place, the, the new staff person, they will help, uh, people that utilize that service while, uh, first of all, can you just expand upon what that service looks like, how it's accessed? And then secondly, the new staff person, they will help, uh, someone utilizing that service navigate, uh, the system, will they? Is that my understanding?
So, um, right now, the way it's set up is it's set up through the Y. Uh, and so if you are in need of housing through, from eight-thirty to four-thirty, then, um, you can visit the Y and there will be somebody there. If it occurs after hours, then, um, the phone lines and, and two-on-one are well aware of the program and they can go ahead and set someone up, um, with a emergency housing that night and the Y will follow up that morning. So there's no gap in service for someone having to wait until morning for, for emergency housing. Uh, police are all well aware of the program too and also participate. So if police, uh, are called or become aware of someone who needs housing, um, then that, then that is available. Um, as for what this person will be doing, this person is specifically working, so we're looking at people that are, um, have, are experiencing homelessness in a, so it's a chronic condition. So it's chronic homelessness. So it's not someone that's just that episodic homelessness that we often see through the Y. So this would be somebody that maybe has visited the, um, um, hospital a few times and they are able to now determine that this person needs assistance. Uh, so they will need more than housing. They're probably going to need mental health supports. They may need physical health supports. So that person would be doing an assessment to determine that need and then they would be working with that. So that person will become that navigator. Um, but it will be for people that are experiencing chronic homelessness.
Okay.
Thank you. Sounds like, uh, a position that's well needed.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Counselor Mackey. Any other, uh, comments from county councillors? Hearing none. Any opposed to this motion? That is carried. All right, moving forward then, we had one item that was pulled from our consent agenda and that was with regards to the letter, uh, from Gray County Federation of Ag. And I think, uh, Counsel Robinson, you pulled, you pulled that, uh, particular item. So, uh, I'll, I'll pass it over to you.
Yes, and thank you and through you, uh, Mr. Warden. So the, uh, the correspondence is from.
Excuse me, Counselor Robinson. Sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Can we just have a motion to put that on the floor?
Oh, sorry. Uh, Counselor Robinson, are you putting that on the floor?
Sure.
Okay, do I, I need a second or? I, I can't see everybody in my screen, so.
Hutchinson.
Okay, Counselor Hutchinson. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Robinson. Thanks, um, that Deputy Clerk. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Through you, um, Mr. Warden. Uh, just to highlight that, that correspondence from, uh, the Gray Federation of Agriculture, they were looking at creating a, a task force to, uh, deal with local protein production and how it could potentially be, uh, processed, uh, locally and, and that processing, uh, capacity. Uh, I'm seeing a very clear dovetail into our newly, uh, established, what, uh, Gray County Agricultural Advisory Committee. And, uh, just looking forward to the terms of reference when they come forward from staff for, uh, Gray County Council consideration. The second part of the, uh, correspondence was, uh, requesting that Gray County take a lead in, um, this, uh, this, uh, matter. Uh, certainly I, I see that, uh, that coming forward, uh, other through the, um, Gray County Agricultural Advisory Committee, but there's a couple other opportunities and whether this could be addressed through the, um, the Western Wardens Caucus, uh, Warden McQueen or also as a, as a delegation, whether it's through the Western Warden, uh, Caucus or through, um, a, an overall A M O delegation. So just a few thoughts. Um, thank you.
Uh, well, maybe I'll go back to Madam C A O. Um, you and I've had some conversation with regards to this and a delegation request. I don't know if you want to speak to it.
Yes, thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, we have Gray County requested, uh, delegation at A M O on, um, a new slaughter facility, um, and did that in collaboration with, uh, Bruce Huron and Perth. Uh, Western Wardens Caucus is supportive of that and also, um, Charlotte, uh, the coordinator for Western Wardens also put a delegation request in on, um, the, their behalf as well. So I think between one group and another, um, we should, uh, be hearing something positive on, on that delegation request.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, so the direction here then, basically, the motion here is to receive this correspondence. You, you got some clarity, Counselor Robinson? And so is there any other discussion on this, uh, particular letter from county councillor? Can the council, sorry? Okay, uh, anybody, okay, so the motion's on the floor. It's moved by Counsel Robinson, second by Counselor Hutchinson. Uh, any opposed to this resolution? Okay, that is carried. Thank you for that. Uh, is there any other business of county council? No other business? Are there any notice of motions? Okay, I hear none. And I have a motion that is moved by Counsel Burley and seconded by Counsel Woodbury that we adjourn. And that's even before lunchtime, so Counsel O'Leary might get to the golf course yet. I hear, uh, any opposed to that? That is carried. So everybody have a, have a safe and enjoyable July. Uh, if you want it to rain, you gotta go cut a hundred acres of hay and that'll make sure it rains.